This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everybody this evening. Dean, good evening.
We're keeping it muted.
Okay. We have no one speaking this evening that's requested time in front of the board this evening to speak, so we'll commence with the clerk items, the first item being the village board meeting minutes of the meeting that came to where we're at, because we have a motion accepting the minutes as presented. Scott, two or seconds. Any comments or additions that need to be made? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, that's done. The next item we have is, and Dean is with us this evening, during our work session last week, the Dean presented on behalf of the Development Commission, early classic North Elba, the very year-end report for the year 2020 and a brief description of objectives that they're looking forward to engaging with during 2021. Dean, do you have anything further that you wanted to add?
No, I think I'll let the report stand. I think the action items I requested were to accept the report as it was presented and to fulfill the appointments. I will say that after, after the village board meeting, I presented the same to the town board, and the town board then did move to accept it, so it has been accepted by the town board. And the town board did move forward with the appointments. They have, they chose the, the to-be-named development director to be the liaison to the appearance committee and the liaison to the, the liaison to the appearance committee. Emily, Emily Pallidi will remain the liaison to the Development Commission. So that's where the town board stands after my report, that's.
Thank you for that. You have the year-end report. First of all, we should, for the record, we should accept the annual year-end report of the Lake Classic North Elba Development Commission and get that into the record. So, Scott, seconds. Are we in motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that part is done. Now, with respect to the requested appointments for the Development Commission, the recommendations are to, and I believe these are both renews, Dean, or is Kate new?
Kate is new. Brandon Montag would be the one who is leaving with our, with our thanks. But Kate is new, Val is currently serving.
So Val is, Val will be a renewal. As far as the liaisons are concerned, I think for the time being, but we survive until my term is finished, with the pleasure of the board, we would leave Art as the village board liaison to the Development Commission. Is that agreeable?
Yep.
Okay. In that case, maybe we should vote on these separately just to keep things clear. The Development Commission then, we're approving the renewal of Val Rogers and new board member to replace Brendan Montag and Kathleen Thompson. And the village board liaison will remain as it has been with the Art Val. So, second? Peter, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And I might add also, the Development Commission has a lot of activity going on in numerous meetings, and I think it's appropriate for us to express our appreciation to the people that attend all of those meetings and that part of the record that you are. Appearance Committee, these are one-year terms that would expire one year, actually January 30, 2022. And they come largely from various community organizations, and therein lies a fairly broad-based representation from the community. Dean Dietrich representing the Community Development Commission itself, Kim Robinson representing the Lake Classic Business Association, Jamie Rogers and Judy Shay representing the pre-board, Sharice Pixler and Dot Beatty representing the Lake Classic Education Group, Denise Lejoel representing Mirror Lake Watershed Association, Lori Fitzgerald and Debbie Aaronstone being at-large members of the community. And again, liaison with the Appearance Committee for the village board, I would recommend that we continue to keep the point. Art is our liaison for that activity. Any further discussion on the Appearance Committee board recommendations? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed, so those are accepted. Again, once again, I think we expressed our appreciation to all these people that helped with various projects in the community that helped to support the decisions of the village board, making some collaboration with them. Actually, we did the liaisons. Dean, the next item we have has come up in the past, Mr. Board discussion, with respect to location of the gazebo, gazebo that is being offered to the community as a, as a gift, and it's in commemoration of a family member who happens to have been a former Ironman competitor who had passed away. I know, I know it's been previously discussed at the board in terms of where it might be located in the village. What I would like to do this evening is confirm the acceptance of the gift, which is actually already, if I'm not mistaken, been received by the village.
Been received, it's going back, and it'll be re-received if the check is wrong. But yes.
And I believe the amount, if I remember right, is fifty-seven hundred dollars, which was intended to cover the cost of the gazebo, which is being offered to commemorate the former Ironman competitor, and also to cover perhaps some of the underlying costs that we will have in locating it in the Village Beach Park. And I believe the, what I would like is a motion this evening just formally accepting the gift for that purpose. And then I think the other issue we were, we had that's still open was to confirm the physical location to the gazebo in the park and maybe answer, and I think Dean may be able to answer a couple of questions this evening based on some additional information that he received on the quality of the construction. Dean, would you like to comment on the, because I know there was a question about the quality of the decking?
Yes, I went down there today and I have, Janet Bliss is on it, and it's not a contract, it's whatever you call it, a memorandum of understanding. I spoke with Emmanuel Shetler, and basically, we agree that it's forty-eight thousand dollars in a manual sale. That's, and I said, that's, that includes the eight-hundred-dollar deposit. And he said, that's with the deposit. And I said, that includes a deposit, right? And he says, that's with the deposit. So I wrote down with the deposit, but it's forty-eight thousand dollars total.
Forty-eight-hundreds.
Forty-eight-hundred, did I say thousand? Oh, forty-eight, forty-eight-hundred. Forty-eight-hundred dollars total. The other thing is, he says he can make it look exactly like the picture. I did, this time when I was down there, there was, they were working on a finished-grade gazebo for a private individual, and I had a little bit of time to walk around while they were fetching dad to talk to me. And I found the joints to be tight, they used solid construction, there were no nails sticking out the roof. I mean, I'm not a building inspector, but, but I was pretty pleased. I would be happy to have that gazebo in my side yard. I think what they did for that private person, I talked to the father a couple of times and said, this is gonna get a lot of word, a lot of wear, because it's in a public place. And he said, it'll be fine. So I'm, I'm, I'm much happier about the quality of construction because I saw an example of it. The other thing I asked him about, the question that came in, I think it was Councilman Monroe, trustee Monroe, about the grade of the composite floor. They get, they didn't have a number, he didn't have a number to give me, but they get all their wood, their finished wood from Ward Lumber. Ward Lumber has basically three suppliers of composite. One is a lower grade and two are the higher grade. And he says the two higher grade ones are about equal in terms of toughness and durability. One of the higher grades is more expensive because it's a brand name. So he got the cheaper of the high quality. So that's, that was our conversation. I don't have any specific numbers or, or, you know, or anything other than tell you that. But, and I told him, you know, people might be walking on it in skates. And he said, yep, this is gonna be the harder one. He said, I don't know, I've never had anybody walk on skates, but it's the, it's the tougher form of the composite. So with the forty, four-thousand-eight-hundred dollars, that's better that time, does not include, does not include delivery charge. He says usually two to three hundred bucks for delivery charge. That brings us to fifty-one or fifty-two hundred bucks. And then we have fifty-seven hundred deposited from the Mirror Lake Watershed Association. So that's another three or four hundred dollars for the base. The base is supposed to be pressure run, three inches of crusher run, landscape crusher run, and, and something around it to keep the crusher run from falling over. So bottom line is the fifty-seven hundred dollars should cover everything, maybe a couple hundred bucks left over. And the memorandum that we had with the group in Pennsylvania was, if there is a small amount left over, it'll be, it'll be, it'll revert to the village because the village is taking on the maintenance of this thing. So that's where we are with that. So, and I got this document. Hopefully, it's good enough for Mindy to write it, cut a check, so I can get that down to them and so they can start construction. Construction, he says, he should be able to get it by mid-May. I said here July fifteenth, but he said mid-May.
Dean, I've got a few questions. Is this gonna be similar to the agreement we had with the Mirror Lake Watershed for the kiosk where the village is going to take ownership of it? And if, or if it, and if it falls into disrepair or becomes dangerous, we have no obligation to continue to keep it and use it?
I, we tried to go one step further. The money's yours, so when you buy it, it's yours automatically. There's no, there's, we said we would, the agreement is, it's, it should be yours from the very start. If you want a memorandum of understanding, we can make it. I don't know, we don't really have an entity to have a memorandum of understanding. It's a, it's a group of individuals who are donating five-thousand-seven-hundred dollars to the village so the village can buy a gazebo.
So I got kind of a turn maybe, some, three years ago probably, when we did the beach house, there were some trees that were dedicated to particular people. And then we, when we removed the trees, they weren't happy about it. This is gonna have a plaque on it dedicating it to a person. What happens when we tear it down or move it or whatever?
I mean. I spoke to them, I did speak to them about that, and we don't have anything written. But I said, you know, a memorial is not like a rock or like a gravestone that it does, it goes to go into disrepair. They seem to be happy with that. They, their feeling is that, you know, it'll stand fifteen or twenty years, which is what they want. So people remember it. And they also feel that it might, it'll probably end up something like the Paul White Bandshell where, you know, although you're not taking on any legal obligations, if it falls down in ten years, there'll probably be a lot of public pressure to keep it going. But if you want to rename it, they understand it's yours, and you can rename it at any particular point in time. So I have had those discussions with them.
Are they expecting a plaque?
They want to put a little brass plaque on it. I, we, they have not figured that out. They're gonna be up in June, and I said, what we're gonna do is we're gonna sit in that gazebo and take a look at it and figure out where the plaque goes. I did say it was subject to village, whatever the village says, and it probably would have to be fairly unobtrusive, probably a small brass plaque on the inside rather than the outside. That is, that is still to be determined. It would be, it's your, it's your gazebo. So after you put it up, you can say, yeah, you could probably reneg on that if you want. I think there's a certain amount of trust on both sides here as we move forward.
So Mayor, just for my own clarification, you're, we're gonna approach this in two ways. One would be just the accepting of the gazebo as a gift, and then the placement would be something different. They're not, they're not related, correct?
There are two separate issues that should be resolved so that when the, when the gift, as it is, assuming it's accepted, is received, that we know where it's going. Yes, and there was discussion at the work session. I don't, I, my sense was that it wasn't fully clear that we had a, a location site yet. There was some thought about moving it back away from the access path, which would allow for a vehicle with a trailer to be able to continue to pull in and be able to back a boat trailer into the lake since that also serves that area as a boat launch. Yeah, there were three or four sites. I know, Jason, I think you or possibly another of our trustees had looked at this several weeks ago. And I'm hopeful that we can, that we can resolve where this would be located. I don't know if it's one of the several four sites that are, that are originally marked when we were looking at this work session, or if someone has come up with a different approach to it.
So. Mayor, I would prefer that the donors buy the gazebo and give us the gazebo because giving us the money to buy something means technically we have to go through all of our processes of finding a vendor. Or, you know, we have, we have to follow our procurement policy.
If they want to get the tax deduction for the 501(c) or.
This is, as I, as I understood it, the funds were going to flow through the Mirror Lake Watershed Association, and this gift would come into the village in that form. I don't know how much that money's worth.
Well, that, that's okay if we, I'd prefer we do not get money to buy something. We get the product donated.
So you'd have to have the Mirror Lake Watershed Association buy it.
Otherwise, we have to go through our procurement policy. Even though the money's being donated, we, it's our money to buy a gazebo, we have to follow the rules.
That was in terms of having multiple bids, and Dean may have accomplished that, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we did, we did go to four, we've working through the Appearance Committee, and the Appearance Committee went and got, we located, we discussed with four vendors. One vendor never got back to us, but we have four bids. And we looked at, I didn't get the quality of this one, but we, we, this is the bid that the, the vendor that was chosen by the Appearance Committee. We, we didn't, quite frankly, with the five-thousand-dollar figure, I thought we were below the, having to go out for a bid, bid amount, but.
Oh, it is, but we, I think, and that follows where you have to get, at least by phone, contact a couple different.
I can, I can give you copies of the bids we received from Adirondack Barn, and there's a place in Pennsylvania called Amish Gazebo. Adirondack Barn was sixty-six-hundred dollars, and the other one was sixty-four, something like that.
Okay, just as long as we can document that we followed our procurement policy.
We can, we can do, we can do that very easy. We have three, and I say the fourth one we contacted, never got back. Well, we had some initial conversations, but then they never got back to us. So I don't know what happened to them.
Does that help, Jenny, clarify that?
Yeah, I guess if, if they think they can get the tax deduction, giving the village money, good for them.
And that's why we, we got a little bit ahead with the donation because they wanted the donation for this tax season. And so we had them give all their checks to the Mirror Lake Watershed Association. Mirror Lake Watershed Association then told them, you know, here's your tax deduction because it was to a 501(c)(3). And then the Watershed Association sent a check to the village.
Okay.
So, accept the gift? Second? And further discussion, if not all in favor on the gift acceptance?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the gift is accepted. Do we want to take, do we want to try to act on the final, if you would, the resting place of this gift?
Mr. Mayor, I've spoken, I made a better map for one, but I, I'm, the Appearance Committee is running this. I have a meeting of the Appearance Committee next Wednesday. And I did send out a notice to them with that map. Maybe I can show it to you. I hate to take your time because I didn't anticipate this. But everybody seems to be on board with, everybody from the Appearance Committee from email seems to be on board with moving it back away from the sidewalk to do what you, what, what you suggested, open up that area a little bit, have less dead space behind, behind the tennis court. How far back we move exactly will have to be determined, you know, when we, when we take a look at it and see, you know, what the footage is. We want to have enough square footage between the, enough space between the gazebo and the tennis court for a fire truck to get through there, whatever. So we'll move it back as far as we can from the sidewalk, leaving enough room, leaving enough room to the tennis court. Everybody seems to be on board on that. I have not had a formal vote from the Appearance Committee because, well, you know, they, they'd only meet once, once a month, but they're gonna meet next Wednesday.
We can, we can finalize that at our early meeting in February. There's no urgency on that decision because this unit won't be delivered until May. And we're probably gonna have some more snow before then.
And I reiterate the fact that it is, it is being delivered on a truck, and I know it's gonna be in a spot for a while. We don't want to move it around. It's not that easy to move around, but it is not a permanent structure. You can't, we can't move it.
I believe the rule is ten feet from a structure to a structure for fire protection.
Yeah, that's what I think too. Yeah, so we'll, we'll push it back that far probably. There's also, we also want to look at that area. There's a certain, we're, I think we're away from it, but there's, we'll be able to see it when the snow gum goes away. But a certain amount of the tennis court is cribbed up because, for the foundation, and we want to stay away from that too.
How far away from the lake is this?
It'll be, it's, we wanted to make sure it was compliant. Right now, the setting we had was fifty-five feet from the lake, and with this, we'll push it back sixty, sixty-one. We also took this to the review board, and the review board was okay with it. They were okay with it in terms of public safety and in terms of, they thought the alternative location was also safe in terms of public safety, fire access, and, and of course, I call it the forbidden zone, you know, the fifty feet from the water, from the mean.
And I think the APA is fifty feet.
Yeah, so we're, we're fifty, that's why we put it where we put it. It's fifty-five feet. And if we move it back eight or ten feet, that'll be sixty, sixty, whatever it is.
So Mayor, just for, again, my clarification, like, we're gonna wait for the Appearance Committee to make a recommendation, then we're gonna vote on the recommendation or is that would be the jumping off point for a discussion?
I would, I would leave that for, in deference to the Appearance Committee, let them, let them make their recommendation, and then we'll bring, we'll take it up at our next board meeting, which will follow their next meeting. So most likely would be the first meeting in February, and we see it on the agenda for that particular purpose. Does that, does that suit everybody's pleasure?
Yeah. Thank you for all your work, Dean.
Very much. You're certainly getting all the, the north country, Dean.
So, okay, and I'll, I'll talk to Mindy about cutting that check then, and we'll get things rolling. Sounds good. Thank you. I wish. I was just gonna say, I hope you don't feel bad. I'm leaving you now.
No, no, not at all.
Thank you very much.
We understand.
Okay. The next item we have, I believe it'd be one of the November board meetings. An item came up late in the, late on the agenda that, with the recommendation that the electric department be authorized to purchase a, what would be an electric-powered commercial lift for moving heavy items of inventory around the yard and there, and within the building. And in connection with that, there was a loan program, it's interest-free. So what, what you have in your package tonight is, is a copy of the Municipal Alternate Fuel Vehicle Program Loan Agreement between the power authority of the state of New York and our village. And it reports to recognize a loan in the amount of, let's say, forty-four thousand, forty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, which is the cost of the vehicle, to be amortized over a three-year period. And the, our authority has provided the documents, they're gonna be signed electronically, which seems to be the way they do everything these days. But I would ask for your authority to authorize the mayor to sign this loan agreement with, in connection with the purchase of that item of equipment. So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take care of that. Next item, I'll ask, I'll ask, what's to describe?
This is just one of those bureaucratic items to take care of before the election. We are designating the polling place and hours for the election, which is eight weeks from today, to be here, as it always is, from noon to nine P.M. The one caveat is, I, we have not actually discussed this with the town, and as you all know, the building is currently locked, and there's a good chance it'll still be locked two months from now. But luckily, one of my election inspectors is also their safety coordinator, Rose Van Warmer. I expect to work with her, and I expect the town will not stand in the way of the village moving forward with an election. So, with that said, we just need to approve the location and time for March sixteenth.
One question. If we can't have an election, the mayor has to be a holdover.
Yep.
Good luck. I'll be laid out on a board and buried the same day.
And if we do have an election, will it be disputed? Is that what we do next?
Let's not go there, but since we're worried about the national election, I think we'll be able to manage this village election, but we'll see.
And we touched on this a little bit the other day, but I think the likelihood is, given the environment, this, this election will be held, and certainly all of the, whatever COVID requirements are in existence at the time will be recognized and adhered to. And I would think that we have a formal position on the use of mail-in ballot with respect to the election.
I need to check with NICOM. I'm assuming the governor will allow anybody, just like they did for the national election, COVID will be a reasonable excuse, not to use the word excuse, but a reasonable reason to request a mailing ballot, and, and anybody who wants to will be able to have those.
Who's gonna screen them? Is this not a county election?
No, we, we, well, like, we, for any village election, we take care of that.
Oh, yeah. You have to apply, you have to, you have to request one. We don't just uniformly send them out to events of the village. It would be just like any absentee ballot that we normally use.
Right. And NICOM is. Anybody, sure, if people are in Florida or, or, or just clearly classic but unable to get here, we always give out, the question is giving them out for COVID, but I get it. I suspect the governor will approve that, as he did for the national election. NICOM is staying on top of this and keeping. will approve that, as he did for the national election. NICOM is staying on top of this and keeping works apprised of what to do and what not.
Yeah, it doesn't work very good for local elections.
Yeah, no, we did. We don't give many, but, but a handful of people request them.
Typically in March, we've always had a number of our community who are snowbirds and disappear throughout.
Right. And I'm actually given a list by the county. I do use the county list and there is a set list of maybe two or three dozen people who automatically do get an absentee ballot.
So we'll keep you apprised of the developments on that. Clearly, that's the one thing that would be different
Right.
for a March election this year. Do we have a motion approving the designation of polling places and hours for the March 16th village election?
Some votes.
Jason. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? I certainly am big. Okay. Moving on, Craig Morris O'Leary has submitted a request. Again, this is all subject to the pandemic conditions may be in existence at that time. He's asking us to grant permission and support for the Ironman Lake Plaza Triathlon to be scheduled for Sunday, July 25th, 2028 month, which is their normal traditional weekend that they would be doing that event, assuming there's no prohibitions. And indicating that he knows the ropes. He's done this for several years now in terms of meeting all of the safety standards and addition meeting COVID-19 standards. It may have to be, it may still be a place at that point in time. I think, I think we would, I would recommend that we approve this request, but subject to, as we have some other events, meeting all of the requirements that may then be in existence with respect to public safety and COVID-19.
Are we, are we approaching this essentially as a, a save the date, so to speak? There's just so much that's unknown. Is that, is that what I got a sense that we're doing?
Yes, uh, as, as we have with all of them, when, when we put the COVID conditions on them, we're doing it not knowing what may be possible on that particular date, but it does give them a date to work toward. And in the event that the conditions don't permit it, then it doesn't happen.
I just didn't want the perception to the public to say, hey, even though we're in the deep throes of it, sure, bring the Ironman up, whereas we're recognizing this is an annual event and we're saving the date and we're being very cautious about what events come, but we want to make sure that we reserve the date for the, one of the most important events in the village, for sure.
That, that is the objective here. All we can offer at this point is, is to reserve it and, and our approval will be subject to all of those other conditions.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
And our further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Uh, we have two new, uh, two applications that have come up from our volunteer fire department for individuals who wish to become members of the department. I think it would be appropriate to take them separately, I believe, unless, unless they're one of the others. The first one is Barry Ballinger. He's a local, local resident. He's lived in the township for approximately one year. His uh, background seems to be somewhat appropriate. He's, he's had experience as a volunteer firefighter. He's worked for a, I believe, a large corporation. More than firefighting seems to have a lot of haz- hazmat experience from what I can see. He's semi-retired, self-employed, uh, and works part-time as a safety consultant. He's appears that he has been through the vetting of the volunteer department. And uh, has cleared their work. And at this point, uh, it's up to us to accept or deny the fellow membership. Art, art, except Scott second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Ballinger is okay. Second one we have is, is the young lady. Brooke, Brooke Shipman, applying for membership as a firefighter. She is currently employed in the, in the township. Is, has, I think, good experience. You all have her application. I guess I would ask if there's any questions or concerns? If not, I would ask for a motion approving her membership, application for membership to the Lake Plaza Volunteer Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Members? Moving on, uh, you may recall last month, we, we extended the annual applications of, of our, what turns out to be our only taxi operator and formal taxi operator in the village. We now have that application and also the application for a second driver, which happens to be the applicant's daughter. I would ask for a motion approving the application as presented. It appears to be satisfactory.
Second.
Further questions or discussions? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Do we prefer that go for both of these individuals since they're layers of family members? Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yeah.
Let's carry on. The next item we have, and you have a copy, I believe, on your package, is a request from, uh, was received from Alice Miller and supported by at least one of her other two sisters, asking the village board to consider the approval of assigning the name of Miller's Way to the, to a new subdivision off of Milbon Drive that was formerly part of the estate of Gus Miller. It's been subdivided into four lots, three of which are owned by Miller's Sisters, as I understand it, and one of which may have been sold by one family member to someone outside the family. They have approached Essex County Real Property Office and for 911. And uh, determined that that name is available and they feel like, uh, you wouldn't fact that this was property that came from their grandfather, Gus Miller, and father Denny Miller. Plus days, she feels the name would be appropriate while honoring their gift. So uh, the only thing I would like to point out is that the road is not all a road or street, probably, though it may be. Uh, the first hundred feet, I understand, are not in the village but are in the town. The town board had looked at this request and, and took no action on it because they felt that it was all of the village, but we've since clarified the fact that the first hundred feet is town road, whatever is inside, it's considered is, is a private road that would be village responsibility. So this is a case where, uh, if this board agrees to assign the name of Miller's Way, we can fulfill that part of it. The town will take it up and clear it everywhere in the evening.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Alright, alright. So is it, are we working under the assumption that town's going to follow suit? Because that would be awkward if they didn't.
That's all I can assume, Jason, and until they act on it. Actually, uh, they actually considered the request and felt that, uh, that it was, because it was this side of the bridge, that it was a village property, but in fact, the, the town line runs at an angle right there. It, it is, it is confusing. I know I did a village cleanup in that neighborhood a few years ago and somebody said, you're beyond, you, you went beyond the village. You're cleaning the town. I didn't even, I wouldn't have known that. One, one would have assumed it followed the road, but it didn't.
If nothing else, the part of the village will be named accordingly.
Right. The question came up before the street sign, I would say, at the corner of Milbon and Miller's, what would that be, Miller's Way, that that would be a town. And, and that, that sign will be, will have to be marked Pride Road. It's not a road, it's being dedicated.
Well, the town doesn't prove it. You can just put the sign in on the village line.
Well, keep in mind, what we do these 911 things, it definitely comes to the, the address that our, our fire emergency services all look for it. So that'll get sorted out. So if we're okay with that, we'll move on. We have received from Beverly the, her annual report of village historian activities for the year 2020. I hope you all have the time to read it. Some of the inquiries that we get in the village and town are, are interesting and it's, it's very helpful to have somebody with that involvement here to, to dig up the information that people are looking for, because not everybody would, would know how to go about that. So first of all, I'd like to, I'd like to have the board accept her report for 2020.
Oh.
Second. All right, Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's reported. And then, uh, following on the suggestion in her letter, she indicates that her, her plan would be to continue as historian for the village and town for the year 2021. Looking beyond 2021, I think what she's saying is, I've been working with Karen Fountain and suggest that you appoint her as my replacement in December 2021. She is very well informed and will make excellent historian. So we'll put that letter into the record. And what I would like to do tonight is confirm Beverly, Beverly Crockett as village historian for the year 2021, who expires December 31st, 2021. With the, and I believe the annual second for that work is 1,000. Is that satisfactory to everybody? In that case, then could I have a motion approving her appointment?
Oh. Second.
Second, Barry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For clearly many years of dedication to making people more informed about our district. Are there any other items to come in front of the, under the clerk section this evening?
No, there are not.
Move on. Treasurer? Before we pick, pick up the affidavit, Mindy, would you like to speak momentarily, at least to the budget adjustment report, which I believe?
The vast majority, and it actually said that on the top of the report, and I did put it in the email that I sent out to board members. Most of the adjustments are due to contract changes from the union. We increased some clothing allowances that were unforeseen, and then the larger dollar amounts are just coding issues. So where we used to put, I think chemicals are still going into material and supplies instead of chemicals, so I moved the money so that it was in the right spot. And we had some equipment charges that, that fell in one line item and that they were put differently. Those adjustments have been made so that we're in balance.
Any questions for Mindy? Oh. All in favor, indicate?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's carry that. Good. Yeah, but anything else, Mindy, right now? We have affidavit number 11 of the current budget year, representing bills tonight totaling 373,065.99. And in addition to that, uh, refunds to utility customers representing $342.17. You've each received a detail that supports those numbers. Uh, and it's been reviewed, I think, by Peter today for content. Unless you would like me to read the numbers?
I'm happy to. Thank you, Peter.
Art, you second?
Sure.
Anybody? Anything else for treasurer? Any items of new business that are not on the agenda? Not, we'll move on to uh, one thing I would, I would like to comment on was because it is a budget adjustment, um, and there is a number in it, I believe, that's in your material that you received. It should be covered, I think, under, under the budget adjustments. Is the turnout gear issue?
Oh, I thought that was down further. I didn't say anything about it, but I saw it further in the packet. Yes, we did make a budget adjustment to cover the remaining balance for the turnout gear for the volunteers.
What happened here for the benefit of the board, so you're all aware of it, is that in November, the volunteer fire department issued a purchase order for five turnout gears totaling $12,799. It was unknown to the village. It was therefore not a purchase order number. And uh, when the bill came in, the volunteers presented it to the village and Justin, very correctly, indicated that we had enough money budgeted for maybe three turnout sets, which he turned over to them and reversed to the volunteers because they actually paid for it. In the meantime, there was some discussion with the department. There's a question in my mind, I believe, that turnout gear is one of those items that the village, uh, under some of the OSHA requirements is required to provide and maintain for its volunteer firefighters. I just remembered two or three years ago, there was a lot of research into what we were responsible for, what was not. The issue here is maybe one more of a clarification with the chief of the department that when they're purchasing that we, we, our, our system requires P.O. and it's going to be paid for. That's, that's really our early warning system, is whether we have the funds budgeted for it or not. So I think at this point in time, we have the memorandum in the file that indicates, we certainly know issue with the fact that the purchase was legitimate, in my opinion. And therefore, uh, recommend that we approve request to fully fund it. And how we will do that, since the budget is, it's not, was not prepared for, is that 5,299.53 will come from the fire department contingency balance. And as you all know, what that tells is that's, that's a sort of money that's kept in the fire department for unexpected costs. In the event that the end of the budget year, it has not all the news, whatever is left, goes into a, a reserve account for future fire equipment such as trucks. Just, just so it's clear what we're doing and what we're doing. And hopefully, uh, clarification will, will avoid this going forward. Sometimes a little bit difficult because we change policies and systems, and fire chiefs change every year.
Just a question, I just don't know the answer to it. Um, is turnout gear based on? Is turnout gear based on how long you've used it or how long you've used it?
It's based on condition according to OSHA. And they're
They're time limited, or time limited, right?
That's right. Largely, it's conditioned because they want to be sure
Oh, I didn't know if they, like, fired after a certain period of time. I'm learning more and more about air tanks and turnout gear, so I was just curious.
Wasn't that the issue we had with the Scott Act that it's gone out of date? Is it both? He answered both.
I can tell you that you could spend hours looking through, especially the OSHA requirements, which are applicable here. And there's pages that talk about turnout here. And things as seemingly simple as a whole are a concern. So I would ask for a motion just confirming that. Or did you have it in the budget adjustments?
It was in the budget adjustment.
Not happy with that or go for it?
To lower the fire contingency?
Yep.
Moving on to old business, it's the first item of business, and I have actually three items to bring up tonight under Main Street Reconstruction Project. The first item that you should know, and I'll ask Janet to speak to this, is that there was discussion a meeting ago, or maybe two meetings ago now, that a maintenance agreement was required by the New York State Department of Transportation, delineating responsibilities for maintenance that the village would have going forward when Main Street is completed. And those responsibilities that would remain responsibilities of the Department of Transportation. Janet has put together a draft with, I think input from Brad and Peter and Ivan. And I'm not asking you to vote on this tonight. I realize that it just came through today, but...
Well, Mayor, I'll jump in here. Last Friday, I think I sent to all the board members the operative schedule on the maintenance agreement, which is a map of the project with a table that delineates the responsibility of the village for the various components of maintenance. The agreement itself, and I did, I only sent the agreement this afternoon to Ivan to review and to Brad to review. But for the board's perspective, the operative component of that agreement was sent out on Friday. So if everybody agrees with the outline that's in that, was on that sheet, it's delineated M2. The agreement itself contains a lot of just boilerplate language in terms of notice and who they're sent to and approvals. And I think what I'd like to have happen tonight is actually the board approve the M2 sheet, which is the operative document and the maintenance agreement, so that it can be presented to the New York State DOT. Their approval may take some time because it also has to be approved by the controller. And there's two, there's apparently two matters that need to be taken up in order to get the DOT permit. And one is this maintenance agreement, and the other is the bonding requirement, where they are now requiring that the bond cover not only the village, but also the state. So if you wanted to look at what I sent out on Friday, which is the table of maintenance jurisdiction within the New York State DOT right of way, and this is only talking about that section that is part of the whole Main Street Reconstruction Project. Basically, our responsibility will continue to be what it's been in the past, which is we were certainly responsible for all of our infrastructure in the right of way, which is our water, our sewer, and our stormwater management system. We will be responsible for maintaining the sidewalks. The state will be responsible, just as it is now, for maintaining the Main Street Road. We will be responsible for the crosswalk striping, the parking delineation striping and parking zones. So it'll continue to be mostly business as usual in terms of who's been doing what all these years. And that's the operative document in the whole agreement.
We can't be holding this up another two weeks. Would any motion we took tonight be contingent upon the, obviously, the review of DOT?
Well, obviously, all you're going to say is that you, I don't think you need a motion necessarily tonight. I think you need authorize me to present this so it can go to DOT. Be shocked if they didn't come back with maybe some changes. But I think I would like to be, have the backing of the board in saying, yes, this is what we want to present to DOT.
That's a reasonable approach. Does the board concur with that recommendation?
Sure.
I do.
Then we can put that in the form of a motion, Janet.
I think you just authorize, you say that the maintenance schedule as presented is approved by the board, and the next step would be to present it to DOT. Before the agreement is signed, it'll all come back to the board, so I'm not even sure you need a motion. The other component of this is the dual obligi rider. That is a rider to the bond. And I think the key thing here to understand is that the total amount of the bond is the amount of the contract, the 10 million. And that is now for the benefit of us and the state. It does not mean there's 10 million for us and 10 million for the state. It's a total of $10 million, which is basically covering the project. So this has been required by the state. Obviously, we're working in their road. So if, obviously, as you know, a bond is there in case the contractor fails to, fails to complete the contract according to its terms. So that there's a surety there, a backstop, if you will. And it would pay out the remaining monies on the contract for the benefit of both us and the state. So I think the key thing here for the board to recognize is that the total amount of the bond is the amount of the project. And just because there are two insureds, if you will, on that policy, it doesn't mean we each have $10 million worth of coverage. It's a total of the contract price.
That would make sense.
So, but I would be looking tonight for the board to approve this dual obligi matter, so that Cabricky has approved it. This, again, would probably have to go to the state for review, but I would like to present it that the village has approved it.
So move on. Second? We have a motion in a second. Any questions on it? If not, based on the unit's work and recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you, Janet, for that. Anything else?
Thank you, and I'll get this to Ivan in the morning.
I'm happy tonight to report that early December, December 1st, we submitted to the DOT in connection with the contract that we submitted a request for the state to consider participating in the cost of the replacement of the traffic lanes on the interior. And while I do not have the final work, at that time, they responded that one of their areas would consider the request in response. I was called today by the, by our Region One Commissioner to advise me that that agreement was at hand and would be forwarded to me shortly. So we are moving ahead on that. That's one more piece that probably will pay for this project. And I'll keep you informed with what is received. Finally, the third item, and this is also important. The item has requested that, you may all recall that in the contract, the way we awarded it, the contract was $10 billion.
$1,014.
And that included a condition where in the finish work for the sidewalks would be would be completed in granite material that would be for the six foot wide sidewalk finish, correct? There's other materials, but that would be the sidewalk. That figure, I'm still looking for the sheet, it's not still connected here. But in any event, the figure showed, I believe, my memory serves me correctly, that the related cost of the granite was $1,716,000. And that brought the total contract to the $2,355,000 of the board. Contained within the agreement was an option that could be selected by the board, should it choose, to use a less expensive, if you would, paperstone product, concrete paperstone in place of the granite. And were that to happen, that would reduce the cost of that particular surface by $858,000. And because the contractor, there's a lead time to get the material for the project, and the contractor is looking for as much time as they can get. Also, they have to make a very substantial upfront deposit, it's a quarter million dollars, before the provider or manufacturer or whoever it is will start producing material. So for that reason, they're asking the board to consider tonight making a decision on that option, is whether we choose to go with a less costly item, which would be more in keeping with the paperstone product that we've been using on our streets, or to maintain the granite. I have Brad in particular to be here tonight to describe the particular product in terms of what it means to the sidewalk finishes. Because one of the things, and looking back over the history of our sidewalks, there's been a lot of complaints, not only about deterioration of the paperstones, which is partly a quality problem, but also when we're running equipment over the sidewalks to remove snow and ice or to sweep them. There are times that the current product configuration out there, we end up with what's referred to as bird bass. And there's many of them on the Main Street sidewalk, and no matter how many of them we repair from year to year, there are always going to be more to do next year, given the condition of the under surface. So I want Brad to share with the board the advantage of the granite in terms of manpower materials that we hopefully would avoid. And also maybe discuss the fact that I believe there are larger panels.
Yeah, the size of the granite pavers are 12 by 12, 12 by 18, and 12 by 24. It's a bigger footprint. We're hoping that a bigger footprint, less chance of it settling. The concrete pavers are bigger also, but there's also smaller ones in there, 12 by nine and a half, 12 by 12, 12 by 14, 12 by 15, 12 by 17, and that different sizes. Even though it's a big number, the upgrade to granite, the cost savings will become through the years of service. Granite's pretty much forever. Paperstones, no matter what quality you get, will need to be replaced. We were looking at maybe a 25-year surface with the granite pavers, so that's where your cost savings are going to be.
25-year on the granite or on the?
On the concrete. The granite is forever. It's forever. I don't really, I guess there's really no way to guarantee that there will be no settling, but this is going to be all laid in a low grade, compacted, all at the same grade. So everything should be set in there. Right now, what's causing a lot of our issues is things being dug up at different times, not being compacted correctly. So the sidewalk is just, and a lot of times, bird baths are caused because the bricks are deteriorating from the bottom off. So the brick is actually getting smaller, causing these problems. We believe the granite paver will alleviate that one condition, where the salt and the, just the butter.
Granite being impervious almost to
To everything. Well, anyplace that's used granite over the years, I mean, a lot of countries have had it there for hundreds of years. Yeah, it's still there. Thing with granite, like we talked about, is I guess once you put granite in, the only time you get rid of it is when you get sick of it, if you don't like the look, but it's pretty much a timeless look. It's never really got unstuck.
It's also something, if it did go out of style and you didn't like it, you could take it up, use it.
Use it someplace, though. So the, like the mayor said, the reason we're asking for this kind of decision soon is so that they can put this in production. It's about a year to get everything produced.
And adding to that complication, Mike Pratt at a work session on board brought the oval, the oval project to the table. And in that discussion, during that discussion, he did indicate that they were providing for an extension of the granite pavers, assuming the village went with them, which will extend it to at least the entrance to the current, the current entrance of the oval. I did whisper to him as we were walking out of this meeting that it would be nice if they could go just a little bit further to school street, so that the whole oval was the same finish. But I do think that that will happen. And I should report that, at least in the work session, town board members were, I think, a number of questions, but they were genuinely pleased with the scope of the, what the goal upgrade is. It's going to have a new fence, it's going to have the building place the current one. All the refrigeration, the hockey box, which has been a subject that I've heard about from Grand Fraser occasionally, is going to be tied into the refrigeration for the oval itself. And it will have equipment so that it can be operated independently of the oval. So I think that that might be good news to people. I know I had a phone call last week from a family in the school district. It was very unhappy with the fact that the oval wasn't functioning, really, hockey box wasn't functioning. How much the young people in the community looked forward to it. So hopefully, a year from now, that will all be tied into one new refrigeration system. But that's getting away from here. I guess I'm just suggesting that if there's a year delay in getting the granite, or a year's production time to get the granite, I think we're going to add a little bit to it. Was that Jason?
Brad, I have a question. I'm not sure if it was brought up. How long, even though it is substantially more expensive, so to speak, didn't we compromise with the town? And maybe this was discussed and I missed it, that we went with concrete around the lake so that we were able to do this on around the lake so that we were able to do this on Main Street? Wasn't that the intent? At, at least a thought from the board, the Village Board's perspective?
We may have discussed that, Jason, and I think your, your, your recollect is, is partly correct. I don't think it was so much the town board interest at the time, but we certainly recognize that, that the savings there helped a little bit toward the Main Street project. And the Main Street project only made sense because the financing term for this project is thirty years, and the portion that is financed will be, will be an interest-free borrowing.
Okay.
That period of time. We were also. Yes.
So it's more expensive, but also it's spread out over thirty years, zero, zero percent interest as well?
That's correct.
Correct? Okay, okay. So it's, we're, okay.
Yeah. The sidewalk project by itself around Mearlake, as, as a pre-standing sidewalk project, Art, correct me here, but I think you learned that it was, it was limited to a ten-year or a bond.
I think it was eight, wasn't it?
I think it's ten.
Eight or ten, it's one of those, that's all the city would allow.
Also, Jason, another plus to the granite is, we're going to strategically place water veins across the road for upcoming sprinkler systems that need to go in, and we're going to put them in the sidewalk because we don't know where they're going, so we don't have to tear the road up later on. So at that time that you need to hook on, you're going to be able to get to one of these locations, if your building has a change of use, you'll be able to pull these granite pavers up and put them back. Where a lot of times, if it goes ten, twelve years down the road, every time we pull pavers up, you can't put the same paper back, so you have to put new pavers back, and they don't quite match, they don't quite look the same, you don't quite get the quality. So at least with the granite pavers, once you pull these up, you set them aside, you do your digging in the sidewalk, you put them, you compact it properly, hopefully, so that nothing settles, but then you put these back in and they match right back in again. That was, that's a big plus.
Okay.
If I could, I think I could summarize, I spent a lot of time on that. I think number one, Main Street's a special place, it should be different than the rest of the sidewalks, it should really showcase what Main Street is. The granite is a known quantity. We thought we knew what we were doing when we put in the bricks that went into this project, we did our research, and we found we were wrong. We've done further research, we think we know what we're doing, but we, we can't guarantee it. We know the granite's a known quantity. Also, as Brad just pointed out, the sidewalk is where we're going to be digging. So it's important that that be something we can take out and put back. Craig mentioned that it's a thirty-year interest-free loan, which brings the price into something we could afford. It is the better product by far, provided that you can spread the cost out over many years. And the last part of that, I say, is that we have a, a Main Street fund that we funded to put, when we raised the meter rate, it was going to be a benefit to Main Street, and I think we take the figure, which I, if I do my math right, and you can correct me, is somewhere around twenty-eight thousand six hundred a year extra for thirty years, and take it out of that Main Street fund. And that way, it's, it's the users that are using it paying for the, the addition and cost. And for the fund, when it generates a year, a lot of it was going to go towards parking garage, if one was built, but this isn't a big amount compared to what's being generated, and I think it's a good use for it. That's my two cents.
So the, the recommendation would be the difference, the absorbed annually from the Parking Reserve Fund, which was established by resolution of this board, with, with the intent that it would be used in the future for Main Street benefits, improvements, fairly broad opportunity, but again, governed by the board itself. Currently, there's ample balance, and frankly, when we, when we looked at that resolution, it seems to replenish itself without any difficulty. So if you, if this board were inclined to, to do that, it does affect instead of putting it on the tax figures.
Oh, well, as long as we don't exclusively, or at least eliminate any opportunity for a parking structure in the future, I wouldn't be open to that for sure.
It would have minimal, minimal impact, Jason, on the, on the Parking Reserve Fund as we see it. It's just, it's just a way of, of, of not putting it all on the backs of the taxpayers. I mean, because we are looking at a much more expensive product, and for the reasons that have been discussed, we believe that in the long term, I should say, we're, we're looking at it in the long term as a, a better product in a longer-term return than what we can get from concrete favors up here, given our winter conditions.
And we're also looking at, isn't that fun for a gate of the big park on?
It can be used for that. And we did use it a year ago for the, that's, that's how we paid for the upgraded paystation. We're updating that on to the taxpayers.
I don't know if I'm comfortable with the sidewalk, so. It's not something I want to make a decision tonight on.
I will say it accumulates about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, less the twenty-eight thousand, and the gate system that we're looking at, I did get new quotes on, by the way, is about a quarter million dollars. So.
Yeah.
We, we don't have to make that decision. No, do.
Okay. I, I wouldn't want to try those two together.
Talking about you. Not the, not the granite or concrete pavers, you're talking about the fund. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Just on what you want to use for material.
What you're saying is we'll vote, the next board might see it differently.
Possible.
So what you're saying is we'll vote, yes, to keep granite as the material on Main Street, but just decide where the funding difference is going to come from.
Yes. Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with that, for sure.
Okay. Would someone care to offer that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Third. Through the discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Are there any extensions? Okay, and we'll leave the matter of, of the other possible way of offsetting some of that cost with, for the future. Okay, on that, that's all I have on Main Street reconstruction. We are, the pre-construction meetings with the, that come up in our, you know, we have a Main Street focus group, and a small subset of that group has been working on how we get information out to the community. They want to start working on a plan to collaborate as much as we can with the Main Street itself in terms of its storefronts and suspect residents. They did ask if they could be permitted to have a representative sit in on the pre-construction meeting. I'm hesitant to hold up on that for the moment because that meeting hasn't been set yet. I'm not sure where it's going to be, whether it's here or in Albany. If it's in Albany, their meeting room is so small, there'll be about two people in it, under current standards. So we're not sure about that yet, but I did indicate to them that one way or another, I would find a way to allow them to continue working on that as soon as we had, you know, the contractors' work schedules. The big thing that we really need right now, and it's, it comes up frequently, is we, we don't know, until we have the calendar and the work schedule, we don't know where the contractor's going to start. For example, today, we were talking about the beach volleyball project, remember that one? And although most of it's moved out to the lacrosse fields, they still are maintaining that they want to do the championship game right in the village, right in the central parking lot. I said to them, I said, it's going to be at least, I believe, the twenty-fifth of February before we even have good knowledge of where the contractor's going to be in terms of the project with June, is part of our work season. So I cautioned the promoters of that, and reminded them that we don't have that information yet to share with them. And obviously, we also don't have that information to share with our Main Street group as they continue to work on a, if you want, a marketing plan for how, how we're going to keep Main Street active while the stuff goes on. Big job to do, that's for sure, we need to do it. I, I think it goes even further than Main Street itself, I think it goes to our residents so that they're all fully aware of the program before it rolls out. That's where we are on that.
Brad and I are going to see the plan before anyone else, see if there's any glaring issues.
They're going to give them, they're going to give the plan to the village ten days before the construction meeting day, so that everybody can see it, and see if we have any issues.
Tentatively, I think the construction meeting is set for maybe the twenty-fifth.
It's the twenty-fourth.
So we'll have.
We'll have it ten days earlier than that, just to, so we can look at it ourselves to say, if there's anything that jumps out at us to say that that's not going to work for us.
That would obviously, we, we, we would certainly start that project soon as we have it, we, we put that in a work session, even if we have to call it extra.
Then there may be issues that we just don't understand, someone would have to explain why they're doing certain things. I mean, before we go with this public, we got to have the expression in order.
Okay. Next three items, Gerald Williams, I don't know, Art, if there's anything that's developed in the last two weeks on that or not.
Land code, we had a meeting yesterday, and we're, we're still going through everyone's list, going through all the questions. The last thing we went through was the possibility to encourage workforce housing, that height restriction could be allowed to be raised to people that are putting in workforce housing. And once again, this isn't making a decision, it's just what the board is going to recommend, this panel, before it comes out for public discussion and a final decision. The other thing was talked a little bit about was short-term rentals, and where Village Center would or wouldn't be. Once again, it's just trying to decide what panel's going to make a recommendation before it becomes public sessions and then a final decision. Dean is planning on coming to our board at later.
Decision on recommendations.
Recommendations. Dean's planning on coming to our board on the twenty-sixth, is that correct?
Yes.
To present to us what's been done, because we're getting close to being done with our recommendation. Also, Paul Smith is offering students to do sidewalk inventory for our GSI, GIS mapping.
Paul Smith or Clarkson?
I believe it's Paul Smith. Yeah, Paul? So it's just some good, good help to come and.
And it's a project that Patrick will facilitate.
Yeah, right. So basically, your survey maps? They'll, they'll just go and measure the sidewalks and bring them back to run them, length, width, where they are. And bring the information back to Patrick, we'll put the GIS.
Instructions into the.
So Art, how, percentage-wise, how close do you think you are to being done with your draft recommendation?
We're close. I don't want to use percentage, but we're close. And, you know, obviously, at this point, we can want some of the input from the, the village and town boards, besides the mayor and the supervisor, and then we'll make a recommendation, it's time for public hearings, then after that, it's time to make decisions. But that, those are months down the way, but we're, we're getting to the point where it's finally time to come and talk to the boards. Trust me, it's been meeting after meeting after meeting, going through detail after detail, and they're all piling up, and we're almost out of decisions, we have to talk now.
Okay.
And the communication plan, Art, anything? Actually, Anita's been working for the village, Anita of Indy, Kate Thompson, so it's probably better information.
Kate was attached with me last week, she continues to make some adjustments, and she said that this week she sent over some suggestions for changes that we can discuss would be appropriate at all.
Personally, the work that you're doing, Kate, on improving our mechanisms for communications is going to, hopefully, the timing of it is going to help with our main street.
Oh, absolutely, that, that is a big thing Kate is looking forward to, yes.
And luckily, we have the ability to put these pages up for our review, make sure we like, kick the tires and put them out, because we all saw things can happen, you never know, but we do have the ability to do this, taking advantage of that.
Yeah.
So I apologize, Anita, whenever you're done with item D, the old business, I just want to jump back to item C, just briefly.
I, I'm pretty much, no one has any questions about it. Go for it, Jason.
You're welcome to raise your question.
It's just item C, the short-term rental life update. It's just, as far as the enforcement's concerned, are we, are we still going through the code enforcement to kind of get an update? Because I'm hearing, there, there is some feedback from the, the public, hearing short, short-term rentals all saying, oh, I'm having family come up and stay as a way to circumvent the, the number of nights, and obviously, it's speculative, but has, has anyone on the board or the code enforcement office heard of those sort of situations?
Jason, we asked that question, how are they, how are we going to enforce this? And they, they said that, I believe it was seventy percent of people who book online, who stay in short-term rentals, leave online, like, answer a question, everybody's comments about the apartment or the house or whatever. If so, people are, so they can catch the perpetrators as well that way. I mean, it's not perfect, but it's, it helps.
It's a start. Yeah, certainly. Okay.
Also have the crawler program that goes in and watches when they're posted, when they're not posted. That's supposed to be very accurate.
Okay.
And again, I mean, periodically, we'll have Mike for some time and give us an update on types of issues that they're, that they're addressing.
So I would like to know.
That's a good idea.
Jason, what happens when somebody books, when they know it's, when they claim that it wasn't booked? What happens to them?
I think that's a reasonable question to ask, yes. And I think Mayor, speaking to the mayor's point, having a, it doesn't have to be a monthly, but a sort of a, a semi-regular update from the code enforcement about their progress and, and whatnot.
Agree. I think, I think quarterly would be about right, and if we can peg it to the end of each season, and if we can sort of take a look back, like, for example, we might have, we might ask Mike to come in March and give us a winter report. If that makes sense. Monthly doesn't make a lot of sense. It also puts, let's face it, it's all time that they have to spend with something.
I think it's also important to mention that this isn't the law that's going to be imposed forever and ever, it's a living, breathing document. If there's problems, you're going to be making changes in the future. I don't think there's going to be a year that goes by, you're not reviewing it, thing we, we didn't do right here, we needed to change this, make it tougher, make it a relaxed situation, so. I mean, we'll do everything we can, get all your questions answered, but if we do miss something, there's a chance to get it next year and the year after.
I agree, Art, I just feel like maybe we should create, we have informal conversations at the board level and then at the town hall level, I think we should create an infrastructure where the board is officially briefed on what has transpired, and we can make decisions based on the data that has been given moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, we have to look at the group that I'm sitting on, yes, they were commissioned to make a recommendation to the board, and it's just taking a long time to work through all the detail. Once we make our recommendation, now it's time for the two boards to get together, ask their questions, and decide what they want. This is just a, a group, and it's been a good group, I have to admit, there's a lot of talent there from people from the APA, people from our zoning office, people that worked on the land code, people on the review board. I'm kind of the odd man out that doesn't have the experience there, I've learned an awful lot. They've done a lot of good work, but once they, we are, then it'll be time for everyone to kick the tires, ask questions, and bring up anything you've got.
Yeah, I think those are like two, I think those are two separate issues, the, the revision to the short-term rental and then just having a board sort of update as far as what, what has transpired within the community and, and any issues and how they've been addressed. And then I think the two of them, the, what you talk about, they can intersect at certain points, but just keeping the board as a whole updated so we can, we can effectively communicate to the rest of the community or constituents about what's transpired and, you know. what's transpired and, you know, take any recommendations or thoughts.
That'll be the start of it.
Just on a secondary note, the Megan in the billing office who has taken total control of the water meter issue in short-term rentals, had a conversation with Mike in the code enforcement office. And they are working together to send out a second letter, because we still have a large number of people who don't have responded to our first letter and don't have water meters in their homes. So.
Art's been buying a lot of meters.
Oh, they, oh my God, they put in so many, so many. And I've, I've seen the effects of bruises on poor Tracy trying to crawl into crawl spaces to put a, a meter into a short terminal. So they've done an amazing job, an absolute amazing job and, you know, we're extremely grateful for everything that they've done. Because as I said, some of those spaces, they're not.
So the question I would ask is, my understanding was to get a rental permit, they have to have agreed to a water permit and signed up to have one put in.
Actually certified that they have one.
Yeah, they had to certify that they had one on the actual application they have upstairs.
Right, but I thought we were to the point where they've asked us to put it in, if we can't get there in time, that's on us until we can get to it, is that correct or not?
Well, no, we sent out letters to all short-term rental owners stating that they had to have a water meter installed in their property. Sharon went through the list and identified every person who did not have one, who was on the short-term rental list that we got from upstairs. And from that, we sent out letters to everyone with a, wasn't the best thing to say, with the rates. And then they put a check in with it for the smallest meter at the time, because we didn't know what size meter, you had to go in the house with their phone number on the bottom, and then we called and scheduled the time to do the installation. But we've had certain people who just haven't responded to the letters or have responded via phone and then not followed up. I will tell you, Megan makes it her, her chore to do it, that is her, she's got spreadsheets and files and, and everything else to keep track of who has what and who's had the installation done and who haven't had the installation done. She gives records of all phone numbers for people she needs to contact, but we're at the point now, we're kind of out of stand. So I think between Tim and Tracy, they have installed everything that we have outstanding, maybe a few, but.
So people that want to put them in have agreed to put them in, paid to put them in, there's no one sitting around like, we're not a hundred backless trying to get to the job.
No, I would say, no, 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 everyone who's paid thus far, we probably have a handful that still need to go in or that they can't physically put in because of the way that it's configured. I don't know about that. I need that question.
A lot of places that you wouldn't believe where the water lines come in. Come in through the wall in the living room and there's a hole like this big that you, that's all you have to access the water line. There's really no physical way to get it in there.
So you've documented that there is, it's going to be flat? Is it okay then?
Well, we're still working on a lot of situations and trying to figure out a way to get to something.
Because the law states that it has to be metered, so until we can figure it out, they're still paying a flat rate, but they're aware that they have to have. Some of these people are.
There's going to be some situations where it's can't put a meter.
Right.
That, well, that's a couple of them, they sent me pictures, they would have been like in the middle of the living room window. They would be sticking out of the wall. Some of those things and it's, some of the things just don't even have room.
Yeah.
Get even access enough plumbing to get to them.
Like I'm not kidding when I said Tracy, Tracy installed one and he came in that afternoon, he was covered in dirt. And Megan said that he had bruises up and down his arms from where he cranked himself in to get to it. So.
He's a keeper.
Like a little spider.
Do you have a number of how many people have it put in?
I don't. I could get it from, from Megan, I don't.
Are they still renting?
Oh, yeah.
He should be able to stop them.
He should, and which is why Megan's working with him to see what our next cause action.
Be able to call, so you're done, you're getting a rent, at least have an appointment.
Right. Yes, absolutely.
I mean, so Mike has the list.
Yeah, and we get an updated list every time that.
I think he's right, it's probably about time to.
Put them off if they don't get one.
And maybe revisit a, a unique rate for those who, like the meter situation would be our near impossibility. Is that, is that, is that an option?
Yeah, I, I think that's something that should be looked at, maybe, maybe go back to this thing, what we did before, looking at what the house had in those situations where you can't get a meter. Depending on, yeah, that might be something that needs to be looked at.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else under whole business? If not, a couple items under, major items, it's a letter that was developed last, actually a week ago. In response to the issues that we had with the electric billing that went out for January. And you have a copy of that letter that's in your packet for information. Any, any further comments on that or any reactions?
Just that we did put it out on Facebook and the Village's webpage. Since that time, I actually spoke with a programmer today. We have fixed the fuel adjustment charge, it now says PPAC like everyone is used to. Our statement, or the bills now have the meter number on them, so they look the same as the old bills. I mean, with slight justification issues obviously, but it has the exact same information on the new bill as it there was on the old bill. With the same terminology. The statement bills, the girls would tell you, printed out three pages, which we didn't email, we only needed one page. We got rid of the other two pages. The PPAC amount is now listed and broken up from the electric amount. It's now two lines, so people can understand how much they're being charged. Anybody who has a demand on a statement bill, obviously you're going to have three lines in the total. The meter size, which I don't know why that was ever on there, is now gone, now it's the meter number again. So we have made the statement bills look the same as the previous statement bills, obviously again, new program, so the lines look slightly different or what have you, but the information is the same. The, the programmer was very nice and said if I had any additional information or any additional questions, so let him know. They don't generally speak with customers. My request was an oddball request, normally you go through your migration specialist and then they speak with them. I said it'd be way easier and I can get a lot more done if you just let me talk to the guy. So we had it fixed in 20 minutes. With all the issues, I have not heard from anybody else with regards to their bill. The large commercial bills were corrected and sent back out last Friday. Stamped to say, bill corrected. All large commercial customers were contacted the day after the meeting to be made aware, some were contacted prior because I spoke with them personally. But the girls physically called them in the office to let them know that the bill was incorrect and they would be receiving a new bill. Our accounting office or accounting firm that does our audit is aware of the situation and what we've done to correct it and they're okay with it. And, and one other thing, and it just totally left my mind. Yeah, I can't remember it, so. We tried to hit a single item that, that was necessary, and I did a bill processing worksheet, so we can check off who is going to do what. And included having somebody from the electric department outside of the regular realm check those bills. That will circulate to everybody, so you can put in your two cents, if you want something added, subtracted or what have you. And I have been in contact with Kimball as well to make him aware of the situation.
The extra page we spoke about last time?
Has been.
Can that be talked, separate from the bill, Bill?
Yes. I typed it up and I did send it to everybody, there were some questions about the tariff. Kimball wanted an update on the tariff, that's going to take a while. Yeah, and, and the last update was done in 1993, so we will continue to work on updating the tariff, the service classes are the service classes, they're not going to change until we get away changed. Which I should have preliminary numbers I'm done with next week. But as far as the language within it is something we'd have to work with my bud to make sure that we have what they require in it and then add our own verbiage on top of it. I know Messina's version is smaller, so we may be able to piggyback off theirs in some way, but it's still going to have to go through network for final determination. But I did type up that additional information. And I did send it out to everybody for, for review.
So that would be on the backside or separate piece of paper?
We'll start with a separate piece of paper and then see if we can add it to the backside of it. Again, that's a forms issue and without having it completed, I couldn't have the guy do it for me.
You expect to do that this coming bill?
We can definitely add it with this coming bill for sure, as long as everybody is in agreeance with what's on it. I don't have.
I think we could add more stuff to it, more information.
I'm open to. Absolutely, and I'm open to any, any recommendations, we can modify it on a monthly basis if necessary. Because we're limited to how much we can put on the bill, so we can throw additional information on it on a monthly basis, all we have to do is tweak it.
So, since the time you, we've, you've, or the mayor or Anita put up your letter, which was, was thoughtful, there has been more information that's come to light. Mindy, did you want to speak on that as far as residential customers or what? What, you're like the, the thought process moving forward now to kind of rectify the situation?
So we've gone through and corrected the PPAC to make sure that what was charged, undercharged, what was overcharged is now flat. So the upcoming PPAC is actually going to be a negative PPA, so there will be a credit on people's accounts. But between the overage and the reduction, it will zero itself out or become very, very close to zeroing itself out. Therefore, the village will be whole and the customer will be whole. I ran through the calculation six different times, six or eight different times, I didn't even tell you, spent so many. To make sure that that value is correct. Anything that is not caught on this true-up will be done when the CPAs come to do our NICA audit between July and September, depends on when they schedule us, but they do a 12-month true-up of our PPAC calculation to make sure that we report correctly to the New York Power Authority. So anything that's not caught early only will be caught then. But as I said, I've had conversations with BST and they are aware of it. And the, the comment that I got was, this is not uncommon. Some municipalities go six months before they realize that they screwed up, so. We're, we're fixing it to our ability at this point in time.
So, I guess maybe for, just to restate and correct me if I'm wrong, so the sort of the sticker shock that residents saw on their bill, there was some additional charge that they should expect within, paying this bill, they should expect with the next bill coming with a negative rate, that they would, they would be made whole, more or less. In a sense that it, more, more often than not, they would be more than made whole for sure. That's what I, that's, am I correct by saying that?
You are.
More than made whole, just made whole.
Well, in some instances it may be a few bucks, under, in some instances it may be a few bucks over, it depends on the usage. But it's as close as, as we can get at this point in time to making the village and the customer whole.
And, and if there is any sort of extreme cases, that I, I, my recommendation, and I think that would be to contact the, the ladies at the electric department. And I think they're so, Mindy and the ladies have done, like, this has been a significant sort of issue and they've worked very hard to resolve it, that they would be very open to having a conversation and working with your bill with you to see if there is any sort of additional that you feel should be addressed. Would I be correct by saying that too?
Yeah, absolutely, if we overcharge you $5.42 and you see and you do the calculation and realize it's $5, I will refund you the $5.42. And that's not, that's not an issue, we're, we're here to make them whole. But as I'm saying, it's, it's within dollars.
Yeah.
Of being correct.
But they need to wait till the next bill.
Yes.
Yes, and I, and that's the one thing I want to emphasize is that, and I didn't want to get out in front of the board as a whole or, or Mindy's explanation is that this bill, although it may, it, it does appear large, that if you pay when you go to the next bill and then you will see essentially you being made whole, your bill would be less than it ought to have been in order to, to make you whole. And that's, and I, I'm assuming that I am, I'm, I'm good to communicate with any customer moving forward, anyone who reaches out to me to, to explain it in that way. Correct? Okay.
From my perspective, I don't have a problem with it. And if they have additional questions, they're, they're more than welcome to call me.
Okay. Fantastic.
The other item I have under major items tonight is just a notification that two of our wire driver groups have taken and successfully completed their civil service required civil service test. Each one of them scored 90, very high, very good scores, but.
And then 90, or high 90.
90 and above, yeah.
And just will put that in each one of their files. With Justin Roy and Alex Roy. Who said, succeeded in finishing it, that was good. Other than that, issue reports?
I, I, I've dove deep into the, the processes of the electric department and billing. And Mindy explained it very, very well, so I have nothing to add.
One thing I would add, and I, I think all of the trustees received this, but NICO's midwinter legislative meeting is scheduled to be as a virtual meeting. It'll be one day, February 11th, if any of you are interested in participating virtually. Anita, can you assess the? I would encourage that, frankly, I find that meeting worth considerably more because it really is an in-depth discussion of legislation that's affecting us in terms of what's going on. Particularly in Albany and to some degree federally as well. But it's available to anyone, certainly any department head or trustee that wishes to spend some time virtually, in fact, we could probably set it up on one of our screens. So that's good to see. First, I think that's all that I had, there's no other commission reports right now, Brad, I complimented Brad a few days ago. I happened to be driving around the village one, one week and noticed that our streets, street surfaces were noticeably different, and I presumed that was a lie that you found working that day as, as compared to maybe other equipment that we simply historically used. And it, it was, it was remarkably noticeable in the street, it had snow, it had a surface on it, but it was right down, almost like going on this tabletop.
It, it does, it does work well. Still be interested to see longevity, how long it lasts, because it's brand new, so, I mean, everything that's new works really well for a while.
And again, you know, I mean presumably that where the, whatever certain roads are, the several were faster than before.
Probably, because you're on. Two lanes pushing, yeah.
Two ways, pushing, yeah.
Other than that, we did have one water mess break recently.
Two. We had two, a couple of surrounding communities have had one weekend.
One.
About a, about a foot of frost, that's about all that there is in the ground when we dug the last water leak, but I believe something had to do with that. Wasn't an earthquake, they call it a frost quake. I think that that's what disrupted everything, I think. Just, just enough to shake everything up and put a little more stress on certain things and something breaks again. It all started right after that.
Good for people to know that. Other than that, in your packet, there's a copy of the water supply inspection report that was done back in June and the letter from the department of health was dated December 31st, but it's in your packet, read your information. Shows that the department is being properly administered and also, it also recognizes that we have some, some construction work planned for the water plant, which will improve its performance. It's probably going to start fairly soon.
Oh, that'll begin, beginning of next month.
Yes.
Anything else that needs to go on the board tonight? Scott, I'd be happy to.
You want to ask anybody?
Yeah, Liz and Dr.
Yes, Liz and Dr. Anyone, anyone that's attending virtually, have any questions for the board before we adjourn?
I do not.
Thank you. In that case, entertain a motion to adjourn. Peter Second, in love and favor.
I have.
Can you follow? I need to adjourn.